Yeah, Leah.
Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, good. I was only complaining about my eye issues and I can't see right now, but let's start the meeting. It's six thirty-seven. We're only seven minutes late because I've been complaining about my eyesight.
Who's at the meeting tonight?
Um, the following people are at the meeting. Leah Hitchen, Town Planner, Kevin Gavin, Town Solicitor, Dave Garso, Board Member, Luke Harding, Board Member, Kathleen Wilson, Board Member, Nora Kane Daly, Board Member, Leon Lozinski, Planning Board Administrator, Chris O'Connell, Board Member, and Heather Reposa, Planning Board Secretary. Um, and Jim Riordan, Weston and Sampson, who is our planning consultant and updating our Portsmouth zoning and land development regulations. Uh, the first thing on the docket is agenda continuances and modifications. Mr. Lozinski, do we have any agenda continuances, modifications? Wonderful. Next on the docket is the Planning Board Minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
Not supposed to make a motion.
I have to abstain.
Okay, then. I guess I will. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, minutes of the planning board meeting of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
March thirteenth.
I'm not March, I'm sorry. March thirteenth.
I second that.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? No? So it goes.
Okay. Next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, we're gonna skip over applic- um, agenda item number three. We'll go, uh, talk about that later on in the docket. We're gonna go to a discussion with town staff in Weston and Sampson, uh, the Town's Planning Consultant regarding the recent changes by Rhode Island Legislature that affects the Portsmouth zoning and land development regulations. This is the first fourth workshop, uh, in a, a series of workshops. We have been dealing with Jim Riordan of Weston and Sampson. Take it away, Jim.
Thanks, Leah. That was a wonderful introduction, very much appreciated. So, um.
And I'm only working with one eye.
Yeah.
Like a pirate.
I know.
Uh, could I be, uh, be allowed to share my screen?
Yes, sir. Is that working for you?
Let me give it a try here.
Well, geez, what I do.
No, it worked. It worked. Can you all see that?
We just see a white screen.
Oh, uh, that says welcome?
Here we go.
All right.
Imagine.
Yeah, as soon as I share, you, you guys get really small, like a thumbnail, so it's hard to see what's going on anymore.
Thank you.
Um, welcome, everybody. See if I can get this thing to work. There we go. Um, as you know, my name's Jim Riordan. I'm here from Weston and Sampson and, uh, we're talking through, of, of course, the required revisions to the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations as we've done for, uh, three meetings previous. So we laid this out as an agenda. It's just really talking points. So we're gonna do an overview of the status of the project and an overview of, uh, you know, where we're going tonight. And then we'll talk through specifically subdivision regulations, uh, that are, uh, proposed for update. We have some of the simpler tier-one changes, um, and I'll go over tier-one and tier-two again in a minute. But some of those simpler things up front, we figured we'd get those out of the way. And then some of the more complex tier-one changes, uh, they'll come on the backside of this discussion. Um, and then we'll talk through next steps and, you know, have a wrap-up. Um, what we're going to do with this is, uh, go over each of these articles, um, sort of one by one. We'll do a kind of, we'll do a quick summary of each and, uh, then we'll go through, we'll pull up the actual language that's being cha- uh, changed. And so you'll be able to see the strike-through and double underline, et cetera. And, um, we'll go through that in a little bit more detail so that you can all, uh, get a sense of it and give us feedback. General plan here is to, to try and go through this, you know, relatively briskly, give you a kind of a good sense of, uh, what's going on with all these changes. And then, uh, leave it to all of you to, uh, take some time on your own. So a little bit of homework to go through the changes and to provide comments back. And you'll be sending those comments to, to Leah and then she'll gather them and send them to us as a group. So, uh, a little bit of overview here. The basic approach with doing these, uh, regulatory updates, these legislative updates, as you'll probably recall, is to do them in two tiers. Um, there is some legislation, the, uh, the tier-one legislation, which is what we call it, um, that requires a significant amount of input and that if, um, if these changes, uh, if this input isn't gathered and these changes aren't made in a timely manner, then, um, your regulations will default to what is, uh, the state requirements, um, which have some, some gaps in them where, where you guys need to make decisions. And so if those aren't implemented, uh, or excuse me, if those aren't dealt with first, um, then you'll leave holes in your regulations and potential confusion for the applicants as well as you folks as the regulators. So we like to take care of those items early on, try and get that done first. And then the tier-two regulations, um, those are things that, whether you guys actually affect the change in your, in your enforceable policies or not, the state stuff takes over and it's pretty, you know, it's pretty definitive. Um, pretty specific what those changes are. There isn't a lot of wiggle room. So if for whatever reason, uh, we weren't able to get to those in the prescribed timeline, it would, you know, it would be the same as what we would implement for you anyways. And so, uh, not adopting them right away doesn't have a real significant effect on your regulatory authority. If you didn't get to them, it would make your regulations potentially a little bit confusing to applicants. But, um, the legal effect would be, uh, little or none. So that's why we push those towards the end. We're working with the Rhode Island Housing Templates, which we helped to develop, uh, to help get you through this process. Um, they simplify the process for you a good bit. Um, we'll be looking for public input, local board and commission input on these, of course, which is, you know, why we're, uh, sitting with you here this evening and, um, the past three workshops. Um, and how do we get there? So doing a local regulatory review, which has, uh, been, you know, we've done that already, drafting regulatory language, which we've started to do and some of that got forwarded to you the other day, uh, yesterday, I believe, and then we're gonna go over it tonight. And then once we feel, you know, like the draft regulatory language is in pretty good shape and you folks feel like it's in good shape and your planning department feels like it's in good shape, um, we'll commence with public hearings for adoption of these policies. And that'll happen both through the planning board, um, and, uh, at your town council. This is our, uh, timeline for, uh, adoption. This changes, this has changed somewhat, um, over the course of the project. We've been trying to do this on as compressed a timeline as possible. And, uh, I feel, you know, like we're doing a pretty good job of sticking to the original timeline, but it did extend a little bit. Um, and so you can see that we've added in July and August uh, to, to get some of this work done. Um, again, the tier-one tier, you know, the tier-one stuff is being done up front. Um, and we expect that to be, you know, more or less completed, uh, by, by June. And then, uh, there are the tier-two bills, uh, that are going to be dealt with in the hearings and so on. And that's happening, uh, a little bit later in the summer. Um, quick enabling changes, uh, overview. We've been through this before. Again, there are tier-one changes. Um, if these changes are not made at the local level to respond to the state law, the state law will override the local regulations and ordinances. Uh, and there are potential repercussions and issues. Like I said, there were some places in there where you folks need to make decisions. And, uh, if those aren't made, it becomes unclear, uh, in some cases, what your regulatory framework is. So, uh, so those need to get done, uh, as expediently as possible. And then there's the tier-two bills, and this is a list of those. Um, if these changes are not made at the local level, uh, state law will override the local regulations and the ordinances and there'll be little or no, uh, consequence from this. Little or, little or no repercussions because the changes that are in these bills, um, you know, are very clear. They're pretty pat. So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, you know? So, um, so that is, uh, the basic overview and status before we jump into, um, the regulatory changes that are being proposed. Are there any questions?
None noted.
Okay, hearing none, we shall move along here. Of course, at any point in time, if, if you feel like you need to ask a question or have, uh, a comment, uh, that you feel is important to, um, insert, please, uh, please let us know when, you know, we're happy to hear that and trying to deal with it, uh, as we go along. As I mentioned, we'll go through this article by article, so there'll be opportunities for feedback essentially after each article. All right, so the first one, and again, these are the ones that are sort of simpler. We're taking care of those upfront. First one of those is Article Two, where the definitions are. Um, there are two definitions that have been added under this, uh, under Article Two and their Development Plan Review and Land Development Project. Neither of those definitions were in, uh, your previous subdivision regulations, um, and they were not in state law. So those are being added in. And then there's several, excuse me, several definitions that are being updated. Uh, they include the administrative subdivision, the administrative officer, uh, land, um, major land development, the master plan, minor land development. Um, there's six new criteria for that. And, uh, the minor subdivision is thresholds, uh, on minor subdivisions increased from, uh, five buildable lots to nine buildable lots or less created. So it expanded minors, minor subdivision, the definition of minor subdivision. So, um, now I'll actually pull up the language of, uh, that article. Is that resolution okay on the screen? Can folks see that?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, and, uh, you'll be able to see here, uh, with the strike-through and, uh, underline what things were changed. Um, so specifically, this, this, and this was struck, or the definition was struck in its entirety. And, uh, it's now municipal official designated, this is the administrative officer, is an initial, uh, municipal official that's designated by the local regulations to administer land development and subdivision regulations. Um, and then it goes on, uh, at a little bit length, uh, from that. There is, uh, the administrative subdivision definition, um, and that again was struck basically in its entirety and replaced with subdivision of existing lots, which yields no additional lots for development and involves no creation or extension of streets. Um, subdivision only involves division, mergers, mergers and divisions or adjustments of boundaries of existing lots. The Board of Appeal definition was changed. Um, and so that is now the local review authority for appeals actions of the administrative officer, which shall be the local zoning board of reviews. So the language here changed, but the actual definition is, is pretty similar. Certificate of Completeness basically remained the same. Um, the word approval was, um, was changed out with review. Development Plan Review, as I mentioned, this is a whole new definition. So it's the design or site plan review of a development of a permitted use. Um, and then municipalities may utilize Development Plan Review under, uh, limited circumstances to encourage development uh, to comply with design and/or performance standards of the community under specific objective guidelines or developments, including but not limited to, and it's got six criteria here. Um, the, uh, the Development Plan Review is, uh, you know, that was mentioned above here, has changed around pretty substantially. We'll go over that in a little bit. But six criteria include a change in use at property where no, um, extensive construction or improvements are sought. Um, and adaptive reuse project located in a commercial zone with no extensive exterior construction. An adaptive reuse project located in a residential zone, which results in less than nine residential units. Development in a designated urban or growth center, institutional development design review, uh, for education or hospital facilities or development of an historic district. Pardon me. Uh, land development project, again, this was a definition that was, um, was added. Wasn't in there before. And this is a project which one or more, uh, lots, tracts or parcels of land or portion thereof are developed or redeveloped as coordinated, um, as a coordinated site for one or more uses, et cetera. Major land development, uh, was, uh, struck and changed around a bit. So, and now it is now a land development project which exceeds the thresholds for minor land development projects. Um, so if it's not, it's not minor, it's major, basically. Um, major subdivision is a subdivision creating ten or more buildable lots. So like we were saying, um, another way to look at it is, uh, nine or less is minor and, uh, ten or more is major. Master plan, so master plan, the change here was an addition. It is the first formal review step of land development or major subdivision process and step in the process, uh, which public hearing is held. It's only, master plan is only now part of major, um, land development or major, or the major subdivision process. Um, minor land development. As you can see, it's got a set of new criteria, um, that define it and it's a land development project involving any one of these. Minor subdivision, so creating nine or fewer buildable lots. Uh, the permitting authority, there were some minor changes in that preliminary plan. Um, again, uh, you know, there's a fair amount of wording that changed here, but it's, um, you know, relatively minor changes, even though it's, uh, extensive wording. Subdivision, kind of the same thing. And that, and that ends the definition. So before we go to the next article, um, are there questions about definitions?
No questions.
All right, good so far. So the next item we were going to take a look at. Oh, I wanted to point this out, uh, and that's that, you know, the, and this was, uh, discussed at the beginning to some extent in that definition slide. Um, is struck through, is obviously deleted, uh, underlined is added. There is in some, on some occasions, and you'll see this in some of the next articles, um, language in red that it's taken directly from the state law that must be inserted into the regulations as written. You can't change it. Uh, language in black that's diva- uh, derived from best practices. So, um, in some cases, we're, you know, there's a cross-section to, uh, double, to be double-checked, uh, upon final edit. Um, there, we need to, you know, we need to think through it a little bit more, but of course, we're, uh, taking comments now because we, you know, we have some good idea about where things are going. Stuff that is blue highlighted is a decision point for, uh, the town and the planning board. And, uh, items that are highlighted in pink, um, are for future review, um, once the initial tier-two edits are completed. So we wanted to point that out because, um, those color coatings show up in, uh, some of these revised articles as we go through. So, um, the next article we are going to look at is Article Three. And, uh, the two main things, uh, having to do with Article Three applications is that the article has been updated to reflect, pardon me, that the administrative officer will advise the applicant which reviews are required. So the, um, administrative officer essentially classifies, uh, whether an application, how an application goes through the process. Um, and, uh, the second point, which is that an applicant shall not be required to obtain both land development and development plan review for the same project. It has to be either just one or the other. Um, before we jump into the article, any, you know, uh, questions about this particular slide?
Appears not.
Okay, off to three. So you can see. Is that good? I can make it a bit larger, too.
Yeah, make it a little bit larger. Okay, good.
Was that for me, Leah? I couldn't, couldn't quite make it.
Keep going, Jim. You're good.
All right. So you can see, um, in Article Three, that a lot of the beginning text just remains the same. No changes. We get down into here and this is the language that refers to an applicant shall not be required to obtain both a land development and development plan review for the same project. It strikes through, uh, some of the three types of applications, um, but then reestablishes them as subdivisions, land development projects and development plan reviews. So there used to be administrative subdivisions, minor subdivisions, uh, or minor land development and then major subdivisions or major, um, land development. And that process, that's been changed around a little bit. Um, the minor land development, major land development projects are noted here as land development projects in general. So those two things didn't go away. They just got, I don't know, reconfigured a little bit. And, um, subdivisions now includes administrative subdivisions, minor or major subdivisions. And then, of course, there's Development Plan Review. These lines seventy-seven through eighty-seven, um, note, um, that the, that there's a certificate of completeness process, uh, that the administrative officer goes through. And then as we move down here, and then that essentially completes this part of it. And, um, as I mentioned before, the administrative officer also dispositions, um, basically or classifies, uh, how the application will proceed through the process. So, um, before we move on to the next item, any questions about this?
Think you're doing an excellent job, Jim. There's no questions.
All right, well, we'll proceed then. Um, Article Twelve, so, you know, it, it, as you probably saw at the beginning, we're not taking these in exact order because we're trying to take a look at some of the easier stuff first. Uh, kind of get warmed up here a little bit before we dive into some of the more, um, you know, the more complex, uh, aspects of this. Uh, Article Twelve Administration, so there's two key changes out of that. Um, that's the, there is an amendment, uh, to the administrative section, specifically the duties and responsibilities of the administrative officer are changed. And then, uh, this section, this article also establishes the role and responsibility of the TRC in regulations. Um, any questions about that before I dive into the actual language? Um, any questions about that before I dive into the actual language?
None noted.
How's that?
Very good.
Excellent, all right. Uh, so you can see here, we do have some yellow, blue, and pink text that, that you may see as we go along through here. So. The appointment of the administrative officer, there were minimum qualifications now. Then the duties and responsibilities. Um, some of those have been changed around a little bit too. Uh, the AO uh shall serve as the chair of the technical review committee. Um, as needed, so that's kind of a significant change. Um, the AO shall review and approve qualified applications as set forth in these regulations. Then there is this language again in red, meaning that um, you know, it came straight from the state law. So there is a requirement to establish a technical review committee. You guys already had one in uh your regulations, as I'm sure you know. But uh, this, you know, changed it up a little bit. And the requirements include that the TRC shall consist of, and then you're allowed to pick the number of members. But it is supposed to include the planning director, assistant planner, building official, fire chief, fire marshal, police chief. Uh, or designate DPW director and Portsmouth uh water and fire district engineer. Um, the planning board shall adopt written procedures establishing the committee's responsibility. Of planning board shall adopt written procedures establishing. So it looks like it was repeated twice, sorry about that. Um, this is added on uh to uh reports um of the TRC. It's changed to recommendations of the TRC. And the recommendation of the TRC shall be made available to the applicant prior to the decision of the permitting authority. Uh, added on to major land development projects and subdivisions. Um, advisory to the permitting authority is determined. Uh, provided that the TRC reviews the application prior to the planning board's first meeting on the application. Some places here that um, some additional decision making uh needs to happen. And then that completes these changes. Any questions about article twelve administration before we move on?
I don't think so.
All right, I'm gonna keep rolling then. Article fourteen appeals. So this moves the appeal process of decisions of the AO on applications to superior court. Um, as we've discussed before, this is a requirement of the new legislation. So there isn't a whole lot that um, you know, there isn't a whole lot of wickle room on this particular item. Um, any questions before we uh bring up the actual article?
Bring it up.
Assuming this is uh, this is a good res- resolution for you all. So, uh. The um. The planning board of appeal was struck out in its entirety. And it's been changed to decisions by the administrative officer approving or denying projects. Shall not be subject to the sec- section and uh shall proceed directly to superior court. So um, again, if there are, you know. Uh, any appeals, that's, that's how these go. The appeal process is uh changed slightly. Refers to a specific section of um Rhode Island general law now. Stay of proceedings has changed a little bit in appeal. Stay is all proceedings instead of uh, uh, it shall. Stay all proceedings, I guess. And the rest of these, I think, are relatively minor changes, except for this one, of course, um, appeals to the superior court. Uh, appeals from a decision grant, uh, decision granting or denying approval of a final plan shall be limited to elements. Of the approval or disapproval not contained in the decision reached by the planning board. At the preliminary stage, providing that a public hearing has been held on the plan if required pursuant to this chapter. Um, and that's it for this section. Uh, questions about this?
No.
We shall keep rolling then. All right, so now we get into the three sort of meteor uh pieces of this. So it's article five, minor land development. And minor subdivision. So the significant changes here are. Uh, it defines review paths for applications involving modifications, variance. Uh, street creation, extension versus all other applications. Provides opportunity to define types of waivers the AO may provide. Uh, several added deadlines for elements of review. Um, some of the deadlines also got changed around a bit. Provides opportunity to define major changes and minor changes. And extends uh the expiration of approvals from ninety days to one year. That's, that's uh also a pretty significant change. Um, questions before we look at the language?
Let's jump right into it.
So it shall be. So um, the applicability statement changed upfront here. Because uh the definitions of minor and major land development changed around. So these are reflective of what's in the definition. Or they cross, cross-reference to it. Um, procedure, so review changes, um. So under minor plan review, um. If uh street or if the street creation or extension is involved. Or request for variance and or special unit, um, special use permits are submitted pursuant. To a unified development application. Um, a public hearing is required by the planning board during preliminary plan review. Applications requesting relief from the zoning ordinance, so there's um. A list of three of these, and that's applications under the sig- uh, under the section which require relief. Um, which qualifies only as a modification. Applications under this section which require relief uh from literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. So uh, obviously uh variances um or s- uh special use permits. And uh, applications involving a street creation or extension. Those all get reviewed by the planning board. Uh, other applications, so the administrative officer shall review and grant, grant with conditions. Or deny all other applications under the section. And um may grant waivers of design standards as set forth in the local regulations and zoning ordinance. And um, the administrative officer may utilize the technical review committee. For initial review and recommendation, the administrative officer may grant the following waivers. And so we've included here some examples of some kinds of waivers that other towns have used. Um, we, we took out, you know, we did not include the names of the communities. Um, just noted them as town one, two, and three. Uh, in town one, do not want, they do not want the uh AO to grant waivers of any standard, so there were none. Town two, they allowed uh standards of curbing sidewalks and street trees. To uh be granted waivers through the AO. Town three. Uh, interior lot angles, angles of uh side lot lines, uh curbing or sidewalk waivers. And then for certification, for each applicable stage of review. The application shall be certified in writing uh by the AO within twenty-five days of submission. Along with completed checklist of requirements for submission. If no street creation or extension, et cetera, et cetera, um. And a completed checklist of the requirements for the submission are required as part of the submission. Such application shall be certified in writing, uh, complete or incomplete by the AO within fifteen days. So it establishes a fifteen day limit. If, if something is uh is wrong and it goes back to the applicant, that stops the clock. However, in no event will the administrative uh, and then the clock can restart once uh there's a resubmission. However, in no event will an administrative officer be required to certify a corrected submission. Uh, as complete with less than ten days, within less than ten days after resubmission. So you always have at least ten days even after resubmission. Street extensions or creations, uh, if that's required. Um, or the application i- is reviewed under unified uh development plan review. Planning board uh holds a public hearing. Uh, and then these last couple of items were struck out. Uh, because they were addressed in other parts of, of uh. This um. This rule. And I think that's the end of this section. Nope, I'm sorry, a little bit more. The uh, the failure to act clause has been revised to include the administrative officer. Um, there's a discussion of final plan review in here with the administrative officer shall. Uh, approve, deny, approve with conditions, or refer to the application, refer the application to the planning board. Based on a finding of a major change within twenty-five days. Modifications and changes to plans, so minor changes to the plans. Uh, approved at any stage may be approved administratively, so this means by the administrative officer. Um, and there's a list of minor changes. Um, you're supposed to come up with a list of minor changes that this can work for. Um, and here are some examples that we've included for your consideration. Changes to utility plans, lot line revisions, changes to grading plans, changes to construction plans. Due to unforeseen physical conditions, modifications of construction plans for offsite improvements. And modifications required outside by outside permitting agencies. Major changes to plans approved at any stage may be approved only by the applicable permitting authority. And must follow the same review and hearing process required for preliminary plans. Major changes uh include, and again, um. You all are supposed to come up with a list of the sorts of things that you would like to include. And we've included some examples here for your consideration. So creating additional uh lots. Contrary to zoning ordinance or would require a variance or a special use permit. Uh, adverse impacts on abutting properties and adverse impacts on public service utilities or roads. Vesting it in appeals, so this section's been a chain, been changed around a little bit to include appeals. The administrative officer shall notify the applicant in writing within forty, fourteen days of submission. Uh, of the final plan if the AO determines the change to be a major change, opposed to a minor one. And uh, the appeal process for this, so decisions under this section shall be considered. An appealable decision pursuant to uh article fourteen. Uh, the expiration of approvals is now one year as opposed to ninety days. Um, and then uh some changes to uh um number of lots. Um, because the definition of what a minor subdivision is. And I believe the rest of this is uh, has no changes to it. Oh, um, my apologies, couple other items here. Minor subdivisions involving the creation of. And it changed the number of lots, of course, because um, you know, you moved from five, you had to move from five to nine. Um, and that's it. So uh, questions or comments on this section?
Kate has a question, just can. Can you just turn your uh mic on so Jim can hear you?
Okay, where, all right, scroll down. It was where uh you had town one and town two or town three. Waivers, and basically, what would be a waiver for a sidewalk?
Um, so. Whether uh, whether they're required or not?
So, well, it said that the, add what type of waivers the AO may grant here, and one of them for town two was sidewalk. And I'm wondering what type of waiver, they were either adding it or tracking the sidewalk. Or would it be that the contractor comes out and says, we need a three-foot sidewalk and it's not gonna work? We can't put sidewalk in, but a three-foot sidewalk is not gonna be ADA accessible.
Right. So um, you know, it would depend on uh, on the towns, of course. I think uh, the actual dimensions of the sidewalk would probably be considered a variance. But waivers would be whether, you know, whether or not a sidewalk is required. Did that make sense? Yep. Other questions, comments?
I don't see any other questions, Jim.
Okay, we'll keep rolling then. Okay, the next item here is, or the next slide is um article six, major land development. Uh, and uh. And subdivisions, and this is, this is pretty similar to um, to the kind of uh changes we were seeing. In the last slide, there's, you know, a lot of uh, I guess I'll call them parallel changes. Um, but this defines review paths for the applications involving modification versus variance or special use permits. Um, requirements for uh review of an application by the TRC. Several added deadlines for elements of review. References updated uh for the checklist or the application submission materials. And uh, the section also provides the opportunity to define some major uh changes and minor changes. So um, if no immediate questions, I'll go to um. To that article.
Let's jump into article five, six.
There we go. Um, again, uh, changes to the applicability. Review stages, so uh, these have been changed around a little bit, um. Major land development, major subdivisions, um, consist of three stages, master, preliminary, and final. The administrative officer, um, so again, language change here to reflect, you know, the previous changes we've been over. Um, list of submission requirements, this was in there before, but the, I guess the title was changed around a bit. A reference to the checklist. Um, that wasn't in there previously. Um, this has to do with when an application is submitted for uh master plan approval. Previously, the applicant um would be required to submit that to the town, the state private agency is provided uh. In the master plan checklist. And uh, now, initial comments may be, and so this text remained the same uh regarding the initial comments. The administrative officer will now coordinate the review process. And so that's the major change with that one. Applications requesting relief from zoning ordinance, so uh, applications under this uh, this section. Which require relief. Um, of the zoning ordinance shall proceed by filing a master plan application under this section. Uh, and request modification to the zoning enforcement officer. This has to do with variances and special use permits, of course, uh, and similar sort of process here. This is, you know, essentially minor word changing or references to things that we've already talked through. Technical review committee, uh, so they'll review, shall review the application prior to the first planning board meeting. And shall comment and make recommendations to the planning board. Then a uh, instead of an informational meeting, a public hearing is required at this stage. Uh, these amounts of time essentially remain the same, I think there's just some minor wording changing, changes there. Failure to act that was in here previously remains the same. The vesting period uh is the same as before, just some minor wording changes again. Relatively minor worder, wording changes. Um, again, more relatively minor wording changes, uh, the time period is the same. Um, we're required to add in a reference to uh the section of Rhode Island general law. Uh preliminary plan uh gets coordinated by the AO uh in the, under this section. This refers to uh permitting applications uh for, you know, other. Subdivisions of government like state and federal that uh need to get filed in advance of um, of approval of the preliminary plan. This is a reference to unified development uh review provisions and unified development review. Which we haven't gone over quite yet, but we will in just a couple of minutes. Relatively minor worder, wording changes. Requirements for the public hearing process. These are, these are not terribly significant changes, they're changes that essentially. Or they're things that you essentially had in your existing regulations that got reworded somewhat. Um, but didn't have much in the way of substantive change. This has a distance for the public notice or hearing, um, that will need to be uh, that will need to be added in here. Um, some changes in time periods, in some cases, these are, these are somewhat significant. So, um, we'd recommend that you take a close look at them. Um, however, they're required by state law, so we don't have uh flexibility in switching them around. Um, again, these are uh modifications and changes to a plan uh and um, what a list of minor changes might include. Um, we kind of went over that on the last article. Same thing here for what major changes include. And then that, that completes a review of this article. Uh, questions or comments on this one?
I don't think so.
Okay. Go back to our trusty PowerPoint here. All right, and the last item is article, or the last article, I should say, is article nine, development plan review. And unified development review. So this provides the, this new, these changes provide opportunity to decide which projects qualify. Uh, under development plan review, it ran, ru- uh, excuse me, it amends how the DPA. Uh DPR is processed and who is allowed to be the permitting authority. Uh, provides opportunity to define projects eligible for administrative development plan review. That is uh, things which would be approved by the AO under development plan review. Um, provides opportunity to find projects uh eligible for formal development. For the formal file uh, development plan review process. Provides opportunity to define criteria eligible for waivers by the permitting authority. Um, it adds some pretty significant detail around procedures uh for DPR. This includes things like the application procedures, the submission requirements, certification waivers, et cetera. Um, you'll see what I mean as we get into this, um. These are things that you had already in your regulation. Um, but just not as fully defined as they will be now, and again, this is, this is required. Um, and then it establishes the UDR, the unified development review process in, in regulation. Uh, questions before we jump into the article?
We're jumping into the article.
All right, there it is. So, development plan review now includes unified, the unified development review process. Um, the applicability statement has changed around, so. Um, the following categories of projects shall be subject to development plan review. They include a change in. Use at the property where no extensive uh construction of improvements is sought. And by the way, I should have mentioned at the beginning, these uh, these blue items, um, are open to uh decision. Um, on your part, while you are required to have a development plan review process. Um, what actually falls under development plan review versus minor um development? Is uh, subject to uh your decision making, so um, you aren't required to use these, they're essentially examples. So, change in the use of the property where no extensive construction or of improvements is sought. An adaptive reuse project located in a commercial zone, where no extensive exterior construction of improvements is sought. An adaptive reuse project located in a residential zone, uh, which results in less than nine residential units. Development in a designated urban or growth center. Uh institutional development design review for educational or hospital facilities. And uh, development in a historic district. The procedures, as I noted earlier on, have changed around. Um, so uh, the old procedures are struck through almost in their entirety. And we have new set in here, so the permitting authority, so the administrative officer shall approve administrative projects submitted. And the planning board shall approve formal projects as described below. Um, development plan review consists of two review processes, so there's administrative and formal. Administrative processes that which is carried out by the AO and formal goes through um, the planning board. Allowable list activities from the state law are included here. However, you're, you're not required to keep these six, you can, you can take them out if you want. Um, so you can have the DPR process essentially include as uh many or few of these as you want. Formal development review process consists of preliminary stage and final stage of review. Um, the authorized permitting authority is the planning board and the following activities are subject to the formal development plan review. And again, this, this list uh is the same as above, whether these. Where these end up, whether it's informal uh or administrative, is a decision to be made by the town. Waiver, so requirements for development plan uh approval may be waived where there is a change in use or occupancy. Uh, or, and no extensive construction of improvements is sought. A waiver may be granted only by a decision of the permitting authority, um, et cetera. And will not affect existing drainage circulation, relationship of buildings to each other, landscaping, et cetera. Uh, the application for a waiver of development plan approval. Uh, review shall include documentation on prior use of the site and the proposed use and its impacts. The perp- the permitting authority may grant waivers of design standards, and here are some examples, um. You know, same basic thing as before, you want these to be consistent, of course. Applications uh requesting relief from the zoning ordinance, so applications under this article which require relief. Um, which qualifies only as modification shall proceed by filing an application and request for modification of the zoning enforcement officer. If the modification is denied or an objection is received as set forth in. Of course, it's got a reference to the chapter number, um, such application shall proceed under the unified development review. Uh, which gets reviewed by the planning board. Um, applications under this section which require relief from a literal provision, basically the same process. List of submission requirements here. The certification process, uh, timing of uh each element of that. Then the application review and decision, again, um, periods of time. Under which each of these things uh is required to take place, formal development review. Same sort of thing, um, it includes preliminary and final plan and it gives uh specified dates, prescribed dates. Or not dates, I should say, number of days uh that the process must be completed within. Um, note that failure to act means that the approval's automatic. Uh, and then the vested right, so um. There's, the approval of the development, the plan review shall expire two years from the date of approval. However, validity may be extended for an additional period upon application to the administrative officer. Or the permitting authority, whichever entity approved the application. Um, upon showing good cause. Uh modifications and changes to plans, so um, this is the same sort of list that we were talking about before. And of course, you want to keep these things um relatively consistent. Denial of the proposed changes shall be referred back to the permitting authority uh for review as a major change. Um, and then there is a list of things that can be considered as major changes, again, these are examples. Appeal, uh, decision under this section shall be considered an appealable decision. And then uh, it lists, this uh, this um article lists design standards, specific design standards. Including those for unified development reviews, so a review of projects submitted under this section. Shall adhere to the procedures, timeframes, and standards of the underlying category. Of the project as listed in forty-five, twenty-three, thirty-six. Um, and then it lists out procedures for minor subdivisions and land development projects. And development plan review. And then major subdivisions and land development projects. Um, including the process, so the master plan, the preliminary plan, and uh, the final plan. Um, is included in here as well. Decision, so this includes time periods by which planning board must uh, uh, approve or deny the applications. Um, the noticing process. Uh, again, time periods and uh decision-making periods and decisions uh regarding variances and so on. Um, and that completes this section um, or uh article. Any questions or comments?
I don't see any questions, Jim.
All right, so that completes the review of uh these articles for tonight. Um, next step, so what we would like to do is by May third, have the planning board review the tier one subdivision updates. That we just went over, uh, please provide uh comments. By. By, it should say by May third, so they would, they would, and again, those comments would go to um, to Leah. And then by May sixth, uh, we'll provide uh zoning updates. And planning will distribute those to the planning board, this is in, in anticipation of holding a special meeting. Uh, that's proposed for May sixteenth, six-thirty to eight. Um, we want to confirm with you folks uh that that date will work. Um, the idea then would be to review uh updates that we're making to the subdivision. Uh, pursuant to your comments, and uh, that we would uh present the zoning updates more or less the way we have this evening.
The May sixteenth uh date is also the same night as the zoning board meeting. So if everybody could just look at your uh calendar, let me know how that. So if everybody could just look at your uh calendar, let me know how that. How that date works for you. Um I did not want to have a another uh planning uh meeting on May eighth, which is our next regular meeting. Um schedule a joint meeting with uh with Jim and what appears to be a heavy docketed night. With multiple applications, I didn't think that was fair to you, you guys. Um to have another hour long work session with Jim and four um meetings. So I um. Do you agree? So May eighth will just be normal applications to review and then hopefully um. We can spend about an hour and a half on May sixteenth first with Jim. Uh and then the zoning board meeting can have their regular meeting um that starts at eight. We'll let Jim not worry about that.
So for me, I'm pretty sure I'll be in town for the regular board on the eighth. I'm kind of, I'm a little bit iffy. And uh but the, the sixteenth, I've got some family coming into town.
Okay, well, um.
It's not optimal.
I eat, everything that we went over tonight, I had emailed you earlier in the day, so you have all that language. So um what, what I would really appreciate and Jim would even more appreciate is your comments. On, on the language that Jim went over tonight. So if you um again could just peruse it more in depthly and have some comments, reactions. And thought back uh to me on, what do we say, by May third? And that for all of you, uh that would be great. What do you think, Jim?
Uh sounds good, so it, did that mean that we're on for the sixteenth?
We're definitely on for the, the sixteenth because I just don't see any way to, to schedule another meeting with you. Um any earlier than that, May eighth is just gonna be out of the question. Other than Ryan, I'm not hearing anybody saying no. I'm definitely going to be um taking a more in-depth um look at it. A lot of what Jim was talking about tonight is state regulated. Um but there are um color coded as um as Jim was going through it where um he is looking for. Our thoughts on comments that he would like input on. Okay, um I'll try and uh put my own comments out there. I'll, I'll do that. Okay, I can, I can do that. You heard it first, Jim.
Uh so I didn't quite hear it.
They think I'm a goddess.
Oh, oh, I would agree.
They didn't, they didn't quite say that, Jim, I'm, I'm fibbing. They're, I'm fibbing. Totally fibbing.
Well, you can get away with that because I can't hear what they're saying.
Well, you can't hear and I can't see tonight, so um. I'm going to um look at the language, make some comments and then forward my comments to, to the board for them to, to look at my thoughts.
All right, sounds good.
With that being said, I think we're sort of wrapping up uh this agenda item and you can move on with your evening. And we're gonna move back to item number three.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you all, we appreciate the uh, the evening with you.
All right, we'll be in touch, Jim, thank you.
Thanks, bye.
So moving back to agenda item three, uh which is uh has been on the docket for a couple of months now. Wang Yang and Zay Faye Jin, owner being Jarden Holdings LLC, AP sixty-two, lot six. Two seventy-two Glen Farm Road, it's a request for an opinion to create an eleven lot subdivision as an open space residential subdivision. Or as a conventional subdivision, the applicant has once again request, requested a third continuance. And that being to the May eighth planning board meeting, is there a motion to continue? Second? Uh okay, great. Moving on to number five, April tenth, twenty twenty-four, monthly project status report, administrative subdivisions. Plat plan recording, status of new road construction, has everybody had an opportunity to review? Have a motion to approve? Great, motion to adjourn? Adjourned at seven fifty-one.